Commission, I call this meeting to order. Please rise and face the flag for the pledge of allegiance. Lift your hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Callie?
Here.
Commissioner Dukas?
Here.
Commissioner Westner?
Present.
Commissioner Onstott?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've had the roll call. Item number four is the public comments section. This is a section set aside for any member of the public that wishes to address the planning commission. Please be advised that if it's already set for another item on the agenda, we will hear that at that time. Whatever you do bring before us, we can only ask questions for additional information. We cannot vote or entertain taking an action simply because the public has not been notified we would take such action under the Brown Act. Is there any comments at this time on any matter not set forth on the agenda? Seeing none or hearing none, before we go on approval of minutes, I do not know how long we will be here. If you are parked in the parking lot immediately to my right, I believe it's a G, it's a three-hour parking, they do enforce it. So we will try to take a break before that and remind you, but in case I don't, please put the clock on so at approximately 11:30 or 11 o'clock, you should go out and move your vehicle. Number two, please put your cell phones on silent or vibrate so we can continue. All right, item number five, approval of the October 1st, 2015 minutes. Commissioners?
Move approval.
Sergeant.
Okay, let's see if we can do this airing. All right, what are we supposed to hear? Who hits the motion? Touch motion. Okay, let's try this again. All done? Well, for once, we pass the minutes, 5:00. Surprise, surprise, surprise. Okay, all right, moving on, ladies and gentlemen, reasons we're here today. Item six, PL 14-0110, modification of coastal planning dump permit number 795 for variance of change of use. And I believe our case planner today is Ms. Linder. Please.
Good morning, members of the commission. I'm Becky Linder, and I'm here to present staff report for the coastal plan development permit and variance, case number PL 14-0110, for Big Daddy O's Restaurant. The project site is located at 2333 Roosevelt Boulevard in the community of Silver Strand Beach, Oxnard. The proposed project parcel has a coastal plan land use designation of existing community, coastal commercial. It's in a commercial district that runs all along Roosevelt Boulevard, right here, and the project parcel is the one striped in black and white. And the zoning designation is also coastal commercial, 20,000 square feet, minimum lot size. The requested permit and variance would be authorized for the continued operation of an existing restaurant known as Big Daddy O's. The requested, well, the existing building is approximately 770 square feet, and they would have approximately 310 square feet of indoor dining, which equates to about 24 seats for diners inside, and then a couple bent park tables outside, adjacent to the proposed ADA parking space. And the variance would authorize a decrease in the required parking spaces from 10 spaces to one ADA space located in the front of the restaurant, which I'll show you in a moment. Pursuant to the county, Ventura County Coastal Zoning Ordinance, the planning director is the decision maker for the requested modification of the project's existing coastal plan development permit, 795. And then pursuant to the Ventura County Coastal Zoning Ordinance, same sections 81-74-5 and 81-81-4.5, the planning commission is the decision maker for a variance, for the requested variance. So therefore, the planning director deferred her decision regarding the requested coastal plan development permit modification to your commission so the project as a whole can be considered by one county decision maker. This is a slide showing the front of the restaurant and shows the driveway where that's all the parking he would have. So to the right would be the location for the ADA space, and then to the left of that would be the picnic tables out front, and I'll show you the site plan in a minute. I just wanted to give you a brief history on the project, the property. In 1981, the planning director granted coastal plan development permit number 795, which authorized the subject building as a real estate office. And then in 1984, the planning director granted a change of use of the building from a real estate office to a beauty shop and boutique. And then in 1986, building and safety division approved plans for the operation of a fast food takeout restaurant in a portion of the building, of the 770 square foot building. And then finally, in 1982, the restaurant changed without permits from the takeout to a sit-down and dine-in restaurant, and expanded into the entire building where the beauty shop was, and occupied the entire building with additional indoor customer seating. So from 2001 to present, there's been numerous violations, starting with, in 2001, the conversion of an authorized takeout restaurant to a sit-down restaurant with dining tables and chairs set up inside to the building to accommodate onsite dining, and placement of dining tables and chairs in the onsite parking area, we see in the front here. Then in 2011, the county also issued further violations that included unpermitted, again, unpermitted conversion of the takeout restaurant to sit down, and conversions without building permits, and at the outside eating areas, et cetera, relocation of a water heater and other minor things. And they're in my staff report on page three. And then in February 2013, the applicant entered into a compliance agreement with the county to stay the imposition of federal, or excuse me, civil penalties. And then in 2014, in October, the applicant submitted a minor modification for the coastal plan development permit and variance that's here before you today. So that's the history. Prior, I just wanted to say that prior to the issuance of the zoning clearance for use inauguration, the applicant would have to obtain all the required building and safety permits for the above, for the listed violations. Here's a slide showing the site plan and floor plan of the restaurant and the site. This area, this is Roosevelt Boulevard. This is the one ADA space that would be located out front. They chose to install a mechanical lift, and that is how the ADA folks will get into the building, and then there's steps that are going to be over here on the side for other patrons to come into the restaurant, and the two tables. This is new landscaping right here in the front. This is also new landscaping along the side. I believe there's a fig tree here and a fig tree here, and I believe both of those are going to be removed to accommodate the improvements. And this is the dining area right here, and this is the kitchen, and back here is the prep. And then additional landscaping will be installed on the north side as well. And the trash enclosure, or trash barrels, will be put here. So what happens right now is they take the trash, and you'll see in my other slides that there's a trash dumpster right here, and the trash is picked up in an alley that's behind the property. And there's a bit of an issue with the alleyway that I'll get into shortly. And the alleyway, let's see, let me go and show you the inside seating, and then we'll get to the alley. This is one of the photos I took of the inside seating area. Looking at interesting art and seating. And this is a side view of the project. This is adjacent to Surf Jetty Cafe, which would be to the east or south. And that area, those steps will be improved, and the steps up to the front of the restaurant will be in the front. That fig tree will come out, and steps up will be put in there. Now, this is the back of the property. This will all have to be cleaned up prior to zoning clearance for use inauguration. That's the trash enclosure, and that's the easement that's currently blocked, it's the alley, and the homes are in the, the homes fences are within the easement of a county-maintained road, alley. And so what we're going to do is we're going to request, and they haven't been vacated, so we're going to request Public Works to send them a letter asking them to either remove their fencing and landscaping back there to allow the easement to go through again and have access through there, or get an encroachment, an approved encroachment if possible, I don't know at this time, but we'll do that. I just wanted to go back to this. Sorry. So like I said, this will be cleaned up, the trash area cans will go over here, and he'll have better access to his recycling bins and his trash. Okay. Now, I'm going to move on to the variance portion of the project. This map shows all the available public parking. Because he doesn't have room for his 10 parking spaces and only has enough for one ADA space, fortunately, the county this year just put in all-new public parking, right here, shown in green. This is on Roosevelt Boulevard. His site is right here in red, and so it was just quite, quite, what is it? Yes, that it happened this year. So what we've got up here is the Kitty Beach next to the harbor, and that's a big parking area. And then we've got parking along San Nicholas, and then further up from there is the parking for Silver Strand Beach, which I'm going to show you pictures of. So there is ample parking now. This is what the parking looks like across the street from the restaurant. I'm standing at the restaurant driveway. And another shot there, looking at the parking. There's a crosswalk directly to his site with a stop sign. And so that, this is, this is crossing over Roosevelt Boulevard. And there's the stop sign, and another view looking towards the harbor of the parking. This is also a picture showing from Kitty Beach looking towards, it's the corner of Victoria and San Nicholas, and also the intersection includes, of course, Roosevelt. So they've got improved walkways and marked sidewalks to get access to there and to the beach. And this is looking back towards the Kitty Beach parking lot from the other corner where there's ample parking, oops. And there's a close-up of the parking lot there at Kitty Beach that has quite a bit of parking. And then my last photo is our beautiful harbor and beach and the coastal access from Kitty Beach to Silver Strand. I just thought it was a really nice picture. But it does show that, all the access that we have, and they've built up in the area. So with that, the proposed project is consistent with all applicable general plan policies. It's found to be compatible with the adjacent land uses and is consistent with the required findings for a coastal plan development permit and variance. No potentially significant environmental issues have been brought to the county's attention. I did receive one phone call in support of the project yesterday, or the day before, from a neighbor. The staff recommends, staff recommends that you take the recommended actions listed on page 15 and 16 of the staff report, and grant the coastal plan development permit modification subject to the conditions of approval, and grant the variance for the proposed use. That concludes my presentation. The owner of the restaurant, Art Peña, is here to answer any questions your commission may have regarding the restaurant and operations of the restaurant. Are there any questions of staff?
Any questions of staff at this time?
Yes.
Commissioner Onstott?
It's my understanding the sit-down diner has been in use since 82, is that right?
Yes. Let me go back to my history.
92.
92.
Okay. Any complaints regarding that operation?
I have not, no, I haven't received any complaints, just the one phone call in support of, and the city of Oxnard, I sent the project to the city of Oxnard, they had, they said no comments, no conditions.
Okay. The alleyway behind the property, is that municipal or county? What is?
County, it's a county-maintained road, alley.
And it's, it's been encroached on and blocked off by that looked like cinder block wall?
No, by the neighbors with their wooden fence.
Oh, neighbors, not, not the applicant.
Not the applicant. Do you want me to go back to that picture?
I just want to know that this situation or the encroachment is going to be cleared up, but you're saying that's beyond the scope of our applicant?
No, we had decided that we would take that matter into our hands and have Public Works send those neighbors a letter requesting that they remove their fencing and clear the, the access to the alleyway to what it was before, prior to zoning clearance.
It seems rather important, a rather high-density area, access and egress for fire, police, anybody else, that should be open.
I agree.
Yeah, okay, but, okay, so you're going to take independent action against the neighbor to clear the matter up?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I'm familiar with the area, and I'll include it all during my, during my disclosure, but as I reviewed this, I saw that there was an encroachment issue as I looked at the drawings, because I'm familiar with the site. And, and I'm familiar with the fact that the county, two years ago, visited the entire Silver Strand community to address encroachment issues, specifically frontage. As a result, citizens complained through construction that was prohibited, wherein they found about 60, 70% of properties there had some sort of encroachment issue. And over a series of about a year, in a variety of community meetings, working with Public Works, transportation, they flash his people, and I think Mr. Winston was part of that group, there was an agreed-upon process to rectify the encroachments and legitimize those issues that were there, and it was presented to citizens to do, to basically get the permits at no cost. And so they're part of, part of the, I suppose, title issues. But it was clear that there were other issues involved, but it's not, it's not a proactive policy the county pursues unless there's a complaint and stuff. And when I saw this, and saw the impact it had on this property, I sent an email to Becky and CC Kim, and I'll comment further on it during the commissioner's comments.
All right, any other questions of staff at this time? Thank you very much, Becky.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Very clear, concise. Before we move any further, I will ask for commissioners' disclosures. Commissioner Callie?
No disclosures. I have no disclosures.
The chair's only disclosures. I have been to that area, like most people probably Ventura, but it's been at least two or three years since I've been to that specific area.
I have no disclosures.
I do.
I know you do.
I'm a resident of Silver Strand. My wife and I have been there for approximately 40 years, 40 years. And I'm familiar with the site, I pass it multiple times each day. And it's never been an issue with regard to public safety issues that I'm aware of. But when I received this item via our clerk for this agenda, it occurred to me that I probably ought to go by and see if anything's different or anything is unusual about it. Quite honestly, I think the first time I ever went there was probably in the mid-'90s when I worked in Ventura, we, a group of us would go down there to grab a burger, as I recall, and I don't know how long, the gentleman here has owned it, but had great burgers, and I recall the potato salad. So Tuesday after, after I took care of some items in the morning, and on my way home, I swam by to, to grab a burger and see if the potato salad was as good as I remembered. Compliments to you, it still is. But I waited, I had takeout, and I waited, and inside, and given the opportunity to visually see what Becky has just presented to us in photos. I didn't introduce myself to anybody. I think the gentleman that's sitting here was probably the person that took my order. I sat down in the dining at the end of what appears to be a long wooden table, picnic-type table that capable of seating at least 10 while I waited. But what alarmed me a little bit was that just sitting at the other end, and there were five people in there, sitting at the other end of the table was a gentleman having a burger, I suppose, but he also had a can of beer in front of him. And I didn't recall, I didn't pay attention to the drink menu. I don't believe there's an A, B, C license involved, and I don't think, and that one is not requested as part of this process. So I would say that, and I'll ask you to come up in a bit, I would mention that to you. I also noticed in previous photographs that there were some bicycles stacked here and there. I looked at it from Google Earth after that evening, Wednesday night, just to see what it looked like visually from on top. I didn't feel the photographs that we had in front of us quite satisfied what I wanted to know, and that's one of the reasons I think Becky went back out and took some more pictures, gives a better idea of what it looked like. And I appreciate that, thank you, Becky. Anyway, so yeah, I have a little bit of involvement there.
Okay, anything that you observed is not in the public record or would be available to the public?
I have a copy of the overheads from, from Google Earth that I must certainly give to a clerk, or I can give to the applicant at this time or at the end of the meeting. It identifies the issue, and it specifically identifies the problem with the encroachment and the location of the trash receptacle that I assume is this gentleman's here, a commercial trash receptacle that's, in essence, behind the adjacent property, which is operated by Stark Realty. And it appears that there's a fence, a broken fence, that allows passage from the back of the restaurant to the dumpster.
Would this be same or similar information that the case planner showed us on the public parking, the Google? Would be similar to that, the information?
Yeah, it would be, yeah. We saw a picture of it, a side picture of that, which would be the north side of the building.
All right, then it just begs two questions. If, whether or not the applicant feels that you have a conflict of interest, but before I ask that, county council, have you heard anything that would be extraneous, that would cause a problem here?
No, it sounds like the materials that Commissioner Rodriguez viewed are substantially similar to what is otherwise in the record, so I see no issue.
Okay, thank you. And the operator, if he feels that Mr. Rodriguez has too much information to the rest of the public, you can certainly object and require a conflict of interest?
No objection as far as the, 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 the.
All right, we'll get to that, I just, you have the right to challenge him if you would like. All right, disclosures are done. So the way this works, it sounds like you just want to answer questions. The applicant has a right to talk to us one-on-one, give your side of the story, whatever you'd like to do. Then we open the public hearing and see if there's any public comments. Once those are done, you have a right to rebut or add information, be available for additional questioning from the commissioners. At that point in time, we will close the public hearing and query staff or whatever we feel is necessary to make our decision. So is there any, let the record reflect, the applicant is here, is there a statement you'd like to make, or are you just available for questions?
I would like to say that.
Well, sir, then you need to come up to the microphone.
Sorry.
No. The reason there's, there's people out there listening. Introduce yourself, please.
My name's Art Peña, the owner of Big Daddy O's. I took the restaurant over in 1991, and it had already been three existing restaurants with sit tables inside. There was a wooden deck that was in the driveway. It was falling apart, so we tore that out. We put picnic tables out there, and so it was, it wasn't until about 10 years in that I was notified that it wasn't operating legally. And they told me it was zoned for takeout only. And at that point, we did a telephone campaign and petitions, this, that, and the other. Supervisor Flynn was in office at the time, he came in and ate lunch. Nothing was really taken care of on paper, he just told me, continue to do business like you were doing it, everything's all right. So another 10 years goes by, and then we get hit with it again, and now we're trying to go through the proper channels and get it all done correctly. So that's where it now, and the last few years going through this has, I mean, we just had that heat wave during the summer, it's really hurt my business, I'm struggling to even hang in there. So I mean, I'm just going through the motions and trying to, trying to make it happen.
All right, before you go, Art, any questions, or you wanted to discuss something? Commissioner Rodriguez, one?
Yeah, responding to your comments, Art, you're saying that after Supervisor Flynn was there and commented that you, you took that as authority and the green light to proceed as normal without the permit process?
Yes.
And so the citation you received in 2011 reaffirming the complaints or violations from 10 years previously, you understand clearly now that, that there's a process you have to go through for everything you did there?
Right.
And you have to go through that process now to get legal, if you will?
Yes.
You understand the issue as it relates to the property and the encroachment at the rear of the property?
Yeah, the rear of the property, like you said, well, I know a couple of years back, that alleyway, I guess originally was supposed to go all the way through to the next street, but so many houses, I thought they settled that issue when they went through the county, I mean, went through the. the county, I mean, went through the area and they, but I mean, my property really didn't encroach upon it.
As, as I looked at the, one of the pictures that, looking at from the north side, from the alley side, it looks like there's a wooden fence there, then there's an opening in, in the property line, then there's that, the remainder, that pony wall that comes from the front of the property all the way back.
Yeah, I think the pony wall is, is built in the proper spot.
Right.
But everybody else has moved in there. And as far as the property next door where the Jetty Surf Cafe is, I think their parking lot actually in the back encroaches onto the alleyway.
Yeah, it probably does.
And, and every yard in, on that block encroaches upon it.
Yeah, it probably does. And I'll speak to that.
I think it, it pretty much stops right at Daddy O's where everybody has enlarged their backyards.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't know the legality of that. I mean, it's...
Unfortunately, I do.
But, yeah. I know, it's, I mean, it, it looks like, I mean...
Yeah. One of the things I suggested to our planner today, because I've seen, it's, it's a pedestrian community, correct? Bike riders all the time.
Right.
Although it's not mentioned in the original report, I recommended that you install, permanently install, a bike rack that would accommodate multiple bicycles.
We have a small bike rack now, but...
Yeah, but I saw a bike on it and I saw another, another bike laying down on a previous time. And I don't recall maybe if it's just laid down. But the point is to install a permanent type of bike rack so people can come with reasonable security if they want to chain up their bike.
Right.
And I have curious, a curiosity about the, the side of the building, which would be the left side, which shows, which basically almost butts up against the Jetty Cafe on, on your left as you look at the building, at your building. It shows that that's going to be concrete stairs on the drawing, or did I misread that? And what's the purpose of that? Is the entrance to your restaurant going to remain on frontage, the front frontage?
Yes.
What is the purpose of this side?
I'm, I'm really not sure exactly that. I didn't, I didn't know that they were, it said they were concrete.
Yeah. It looks like there's, I mean, when I was sitting there waiting the other day, there was a table in front of, on the inside in the dining room with four people sitting there having lunch, clearly blocking that, that passageway.
Right.
But there was a door or doors, glass doors, as I recall, that were there. So I'm wondering...
Right.
Is the intent to have that open? I don't know.
The intent would be to have that open, like I said, for the past twenty years, we had, we had tables out on that driveway. We did not have parking. And they, I don't know if you noticed the picture, the crosswalk from across, across the street uses our driveway cut for pedestrian traffic.
Sure.
And there's a kid's bus stop across the street. And I try to park in that spot right there because people backing into the crosswalk from my, my driveway, it's dangerous. The building next door comes right up to the sidewalk, so you can't see foot traffic coming through there. And I've just seen too many close calls.
You drive the red SUV that's always parked in there?
Right. And, but like I said, it was used as a patio for so many years. I think when they put that crosswalk in, they, they didn't use the thought process of it being a driveway.
Yeah.
And when I had the tables out there, we had less tables inside. Now it's like we don't have enough tables for our customers.
Yeah. And as, as I sat there the other day and counted tables and looked around, it looked like you could accommodate about twenty-six people sitting down if you had the chairs to do it.
Yesterday we had a, a busy lunch and we had to turn some people away. So some people got it to go, take it to the beach, but...
And you're going to have a commercial trash receptacle on the property?
Yes.
I think that's part of the requirement. And it'll be physically on the property and not next door.
Right. There was also, when I, when I took it over, there was also a plywood, a plywood, basically a crude plywood fence that blocked the back area, that actually connected to the property next door, the building. And there was a shower stall back there.
I saw the report indicated that.
Yeah. And we, we tore all of that out as, you know, as we were working on lists of things they were telling us to take care of.
Okay. I noticed when, that your front door, your front entry currently appears like it's a slider.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to remain as a slider or something more, more permanent? And then there was some sort of screen across, hanging across the front of it.
Right. As far as the, the change on the doorway, I'm really not sure exactly what the, what the architect plans were on that.
You haven't talked to, I'm sorry. Becky, you want to...
Right.
Yes, come on.
I was, I was just going to say that with the ADA lift, there's probably going to have to be a different door there for handicap to get in.
That's what I was thinking, in order to be able to accommodate, in essence, a wheelchair.
Right.
There was one other question specifically I had, and it really has to do with the planner. Becky, if you'd come up again. On page twenty-eight, the bottom of page twenty-eight, what's the, what's the issue with the Starbucks comment?
Starbucks?
Last sentence, it's timing. The permit shall implement the above requirement during construction of the Starbucks restaurant.
Oh, I think that's a typo.
Boilerplate. I mean, my, my ears peeped when I saw that. Oh, we're going to get a Starbucks down here.
You're going to have to strike that one out.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
One other question, Art, if you step up. You've had your barbecue in the front.
Mm-hmm.
Where is it going to be located at this point moving forward? I mean, it was a portable barbecue, as I recall.
Right. We'll have to, that's something we, I really haven't figured out exactly. I have, I haven't, I know that there's a, supposed to be a couple of tables in the handicap spot in the lift, so it will definitely have to be moved.
Yeah, and I understand from, from the, our planner that the drawing shows four tables, but in reality, there's only going to be two tables allowed outside.
Okay.
And I sense, I get the, I get the impression that I'm sharing information with you that you're not privy to or you haven't, you're not aware of.
Right. There, I know that the, the plans have changed a few times and I've, and I'm, you know, I'm just, I guess I really haven't been on the loop too much as far as that goes.
Okay. And you're not, you're not the property owner?
I'm not the property owner.
But you have the authority to make whatever needs to be done to get this business into compliance?
Yes.
Oh, Art, more questions for you. Commissioner Dukas?
Good morning. I just wanted to follow up with an observation that my colleague made, that somebody was drinking a beer. Do you serve beer?
No, we don't.
Okay, so somebody brought their own?
Right.
Okay. And then what is the reason for taking out the mature fig tree and instead putting in new landscaping on the side?
Well, the, the tree definitely needs to be trimmed. I, I'm really not sure exactly what's the purpose of tearing it completely out is. I, I mean, it wasn't my decision to take it out, but for some reason, when they were doing the landscaping, they, do you know why they, why?
The fig tree to the left of the building where the new steps are is definitely going to come out, but the other fig tree may stay, it just depends on if they're able to get back there to install the rest of landscaping along the, on the right side, that'd be the northwest side of the property.
And what's the purpose of that landscaping?
To meet the required landscaping for the, for the code for businesses.
Okay.
Yeah. They, if, you know, if, if they can save it and keep it, they will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Please, anything else for Art? All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing. I have no speaker cards in front of me. Is there anybody who would like from the public to speak on this matter at this time? Let the record reflect, we have need, either for or against public speakers, so therefore, Art, would you like to rebut anything they said? All right. With that, then I will close the public hearing. At this time, any additional questions of staff? Commissioners? Commissioner Dukas?
Having trouble with my microphone, I'm sorry. I'm just wondering if it's possible to accommodate or recognize the tightness of the, of the project. It seems like some of that landscaping doesn't serve a useful purpose. And taking out that one fig tree, I don't understand why, why you would do that and why you would put in new landscaping, given how tight it is and, you know, the drought. Is there any way that we could get some flexibility on that? We can refer back to the photos of that side?
If, if I can jump in and maybe Becky could put the photograph back. The, the variance situation we have here, obviously there's no place to put ten parking spaces on the site without removing the restaurant and the reason to have them. And so the, the building has a bunch of building code issues that have to be resolved and, and there are issues with the construction and, and potential deterioration of the wall on the western side of the building. And so that, that tree that's on, the large one that's on the side of the building, it presses up against the building. It's right against the foundation and pushing against the wall. So it'll be a building and safety call whether that has to stay there as part of the granting building permits to correct all the violations. The stairway on the side, the stairway is one of the violations because it's a stairway without railing and doesn't meet any kind of code and there's a, there's a side entrance there. So that's one of the violations that has to be rectified. It's within, and, and one other thing I'd like to point out while I, while I have the microphone, is the, the reinitiation of interest in this building in 2011 occurred because of complaints from people in the neighborhood that, so, you know, we were obligated to go here and, and rectify the code violations on this site. It wasn't, we just suddenly woke up or we, we woke up because somebody told us to. But your commission could consider a variance, I suppose, in terms of the landscaping requirements. However, you know, the amount of landscaping here, it's a very small lot. It isn't very much. And, and, and the changes that are required for the ADA access are really not, not optional. They have to be done because you can't operate without ADA access.
Okay, just to be clear, there is a smaller tree to the left and a larger tree to the right as I look at the photo. Is it the larger tree to the right that's pushing on the foundation?
Yes.
And that one also interferes with the construction of steps and ADA access?
I'm not sure about that. The steps to the ADA access would be coming from the left and the lift would be in that general area. So it's, it's a building question as to whether that tree can stay there to accomplish the required construction for the ADA entrance. But it's right in that same vicinity, within a couple of feet.
Okay, but by the same token, we're, for building and safety reasons, we, these trees might have to be removed. But then the installation of new landscaping on that, as I look at it, the left-hand side, what will that accomplish?
Well, there'd be landscaping in front of the, at least that's the proposal in front of view today. There's landscaping, so right now, instead of looking directly to the building on the left-hand side of the lot, there would be a landscape strip between the sidewalk and the, and the picnic tables where people would be eating. So there'd be some separation between the public sidewalk and the eating area.
Okay. It's just my view that, that this really isn't necessary.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. And I, and, and I noticed that in putting, I'll call it a planter that runs perpendicular to that wall, to that building immediately to the south or the left side of the picture as we look at it, is, is within the, I guess, is that within the public access or public easement as it relates to the front, frontage of the property?
No, it beyond the, it beyond the property outside of the public right of way. So it'll be part of the design of his front area.
Yeah, recreate a situation we're trying to resolve on the backside.
Right.
Recreate it in the front. Okay. Anyway, so it would define, I guess, the perimeter, part of the perimeter and still allow, and I guess still allow access for ADA parking spot. And I, as I look at it now, with the ADA parking spot and the appropriate signage, that tree may become a factor in that. The foundation issues aside.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, the tree on the right, the much larger one, is one issue. The one on the left, it may be obstructing where the, where the, the stairway would go beside the, you know, that would be the alternate entrance for able-bodied people.
Yeah.
So that might be able to be adjusted to save that tree. But the one on the right is a building code question.
Are you talking about two entrances? An alternate entrance besides what we're looking at?
Commissioner Rodriguez? No, I'm just saying for the front entrance, because of the ADA facilities that have to put in there, you have to come in from the left-hand side of the front entrance.
Sure, okay. While Becky's up. Is, are the, are the stairs that are drawn on the, I'll call it the left side of the building as you look at it?
These ones?
Where there's an exist...
Right here? This one?
Yes, where you had your marker. No, down, right there. As I said, there was a table on the inside of that dining room blocking that, those doors when I was there. What's the functional purpose of those steps that are there, other than they were there, they've always been there?
They've always been there. My guess would be it would maybe, you know, good, a good thing to have just for emergency exit.
A secondary exit.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what my question was. Because I saw it in the drawing, but it wasn't addressed anywhere in the report.
Probably good for air circulation too and everything.
Yeah, probably. Okay. That's all I have.
Any other questions of staff on Commissioner's side?
I originally asked if there were any complaints for the transition to the sit-down restaurant. And I was told, I thought you said there weren't, and yet I've heard that in 2011 there were complaints. What were the 2011 complaints against this business?
Code enforcement staff is here and perhaps they have a greater memory than I. I'm just aware that when we started the, the recent round, that there were some complaints from neighbors. I'm not sure what the particulars are on those. But we haven't heard any recently.
I thought you meant were there complaints while I was processing the permit. Sorry, I just misunderstood.
No, I was wondering if citizens in the area had lodged any complaints about the business. And now it seems that someone did, but they're undetermined what they are. Is that correct?
Liz Cameron from Building Code Compliance is here. Maybe she can answer your question?
Good morning. Elizabeth Cameron, County Code Compliance. Back in 2011, Code Compliance started receiving complaints from neighboring businesses and citizens regarding outside seating, and that's what led us to today. And trying to get the operator to empty out the parking lot to provide for parking.
Okay. All of which would be remedied, I assume, if this goes forward. Thank you.
That's, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much from Code Enforcement. Thank you very much from Code Enforcement. Any other questions of staff?
Just one more.
Sure.
I'm unclear as to how, what they're doing with that dumpster in the rear. It looks like it's not, the pictures indicated, it seemed, that it wasn't on their property. Where is that thing going to be located? The dumpster?
They're going to have their trash right here, in the back.
On their property?
On their property. All right, inside, this is their property, the property line right here.
So, it's going in the corner there?
Yes, yes.
And that doesn't block the easement? Or the alley?
Um, no, see that, excuse me, this line right here?
Yes.
That is, that, I believe that's their property line, well, their property line goes out to here, actually, the second line that-
So, the dumpster is not going to be located within the alleys?
No, it won't be in the alley.
That's all I knew.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you very much. With that, ladies and gentlemen, this is what we get paid the big bucks for.
Hey.
Sure. We're in deliberation, whatever you'd like to say.
Well, it just, Liz Cameron was just up, and I was wondering if she's going to stick around, because I, I have a question toward the end of the meeting unrelated to this issue.
Other than this matter.
Yeah, other than this matter.
Thank you. All right, deliberations, commissioners?
I guess I should start. I, I know the area well. I understand what the issue is with the parking. As a result of the county having to be down there to deal with encroachment issues, they address a lot of other issues, including traffic flow and parking or lack of, and whereas the original drawings that, picture that I think we saw in our report, showing this, the street, or maybe some particular drawing I saw, showed parallel parking across the street, that three-block area. As a result of what the county completed, and I referenced it earlier, they ended up putting diagonal parking, which greatly improved things down there. The downside to that is unfortunately, many residences, residents who have multiple vehicles on their tight lodges, huddily decided they're going to park their cars on the street, and so, the full benefit of that, you know, public parking is impacted. But I think there's still sufficient parking available to take care of Mr. Pena's needs as relates to parking. That and putting in a bike rack, I think, would, would do an awful lot. And so, I, I, I understand the, the issue. I'm still a little dubious about, you know, the, the crosswalk there and, and, but we require ADA parking spots, so, I, I think the best is being done with what we have to, have to work with here.
Any other deliberations? Commissioner Dukas?
Well, it's such a tiny little space, and it looks like space is being taken up by planters that are not going to get any sun. Those, the ones at the bottom of the site plan, they're completely in, in shade. So, I don't know if that's going to require, you know, concrete cut, water demand for something that's just going to be mud, because nothing will grow where there's no sunlight. There's an, an established tree that I think should be saved. I don't think that we should demand that we put in landscaping that's going to be expensive, unnecessary, and will impede the, the ability of, of people to, to walk and, and sit down. I, I just don't see the sense of it. The one in the front, I'm not, I'm still not clear whether or not that's going to be a concrete cut, and, or whether those can be like a, a planter box or those big pots. That would work. And the other, I, I understand is interfering. So, I was just wondering if the commission agreed that the, the planting on that one side is doomed to fail, or whether I'm just being pessimistic.
Commissioner Rodriguez, do you have a comment?
Yeah, as I, as I recall the comments in, in the presentation, the proposal was to have landscaping around the perimeter of the building, and as I look at that drawing, that would be at the top, against that top wall, and then alongside that lower wall, on either side of those, those other staircases, stair steps we talked about. Is that correct? If you get your marker.
Okay. So, this, this landscaping and this landscaping?
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to. You know, I, I would agree with, with Commissioner Dukas. I don't know that we need that landscaping up on top of that, of the building, or the what, or the north side of-
They probably don't need it, but it was put in there because, to meet the code requirements for landscaping.
Okay. Do we have the authority to waive that?
So, Commissioner Rodriguez-
As part of the variance?
Just briefly, there, there's a, there's a separate variance request that you could ask for, for landscaping, but that was not asked for, it was not requested. There's a 10% requirement, and that issue wasn't legally noticed today, and it's not before you, so-
Okay.
They could ask for it, but, but it's nothing that you could do-
That's a separate issue.
Right, at today's hearing.
All right. That answers my question.
Well, perhaps maybe one of the issues, again, I don't know what the landscaping plan is, we just, we have to have one. And so, maybe the comments would be to keep whatever possible we can that exists, and what needs to be replaced with would meet the concerns of Commissioner Dukas of the probability of being successful, given the drought tolerance, sunlight, et cetera. So, that would be one of the considerations in the plan, I think.
I just want to-
My reaction to that would be.
I just want to go to that slide of the side of the property. Oh, there it is. He does have a little bit of landscaping, some yuccas and something already there on the side, so they wouldn't have to cut anything out there. Let's see. But to go on the other side of the stairs, looks like they would have to put something there. Maybe they could put pots, large pots or a planter.
Well, again, I think what we're recommending is the flexibility to ensure, one, that the appearance meets the criteria of the landscaping plans, but at the same time, doesn't set itself off to fail with-
Right.
You know, that's-
I think, you know, plants that grow in the shade could do well there, maybe some ferns or something that, I don't know.
Again, I think the landscape architect would be the best to recommend those, given that climate down at the beach.
Yes, and the soil.
And the fog and et cetera, so. Yeah, yeah. So, no, I guess what we're saying is just if the staff can take those recommendations back and work with the, the applicant and his landscape architects to ensure the success of whatever landscaping gets put in there.
Okay, yes, we will.
Anything else from commissioners? Staff clear on the direction as far as the landscaping from the commission?
I am. Yes, I am.
No, I just want to fix a word. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
An item that was brought up earlier is that we have the word Starbucks in Condition 17, and I'd just like to point out for the record that part of your action would include deleting the word Starbucks, which was inadvertently put in there.
I kind of like it in there, actually. Yeah, I think you've got five over here.
You'll have to be satisfied with potato salad.
I mean, do have the press here, we can start something.
Is, is there a prob, possibility of-
Microphone?
With regard to the variance in front of us, continuing that matter, allowing him to expand that to request a variance and the removal of the landscaping, whatever we're talking about? To me, I don't see the point, and I agree with you. I wouldn't have it if I didn't have to have it, and if I can avoid it with a variance and qualify, I would go that way.
So, Commissioner Onstott, yes, I mean, that, that is a possibility, right? So, we would have to make the findings for that, saying if we require, say, no, no landscaping to the 10% requirement in this area, is, is that something that we're willing to do in the same vicinity and zone, right?
Oh, I understand that.
That's one of the findings that we have to make. The applicant also has to pay for that, right, to come back-
I understand.
And having the staff make those findings. So, you know, there's the, the balance of, yes, you know, we could, we could go through that exercise, I'm not sure we could make the findings, we haven't done that research, or we could also take the, the instructions that we got today and, and be very careful about, you know, what we're doing in the landscaping plan.
Forget it.
And particularly precedent setting down in the strand. Precedent setting in the strand, I think could cause more problems.
Yeah, I don't think it could cause more problems.
Oh, sure. Okay. I think we deliberated, unless there's some additional technical questions we need. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I would move recommended staff action, or staff recommendation, but also the inclusion of permanently a fixed bike rack somewhere near the front of the property, so that it's available to, to patrons.
Does that include Starbucks or not?
No, no, the Starbucks won't work.
So, you're going to delete Starbucks out of the-
And we'll delete Starbucks.
Okay. I have a motion to the recommended actions with the, by Commissioner Rodriguez.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any deliberation on the motion? Here again, please vote. Congratulations, Ms. Art, you've got your, your plans.
I hope you don't thank her.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, Ms. Linder, thank you, staff, appreciate it. All right, it's Cora Revos, take a five-minute break. I know Council Thonis really wants to dial this up for us. We'll be back in five minutes.
You know, you're having entirely too much fun with this job and begin to worry about your sanity.
And we're going to item number seven, ordinance keeping of roosters. And we are privileged today to have my old, oldie faction buddy, Mr. Thonis. Jim, would you like to introduce yourself to us?
Good morning, commissioners, and happy holidays. I don't think it's too early for that. I'm Jim Thonis, I'm an assistant county council in the county council's office. I work with your commission's attorneys, Jeff Barnes and, and Linda Ash, and the county council, Leroy Smith, has asked me to present this item to your commission on his behalf. The item is a proposed ordinance regarding the keep, keeping of roosters, and this item appears to be a little bit different than what your commission is used to seeing. It's, it's not really structured as a permit or a zoning matter, it's being, not being presented by a planner. So, in the staff report that I've filed with you, I've attempted to explain what this ordinance is, how it came about, why it's coming to your commission, and what your commission's options are in dealing with it. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation for you, if you'd like to see that. Otherwise, I can proceed to the recommended actions, so which, what's your pleasure?
So, whatever your presentation you think of, if you feel the PowerPoint would give us enough background information?
I think it'll give more, a little more background than the staff report.
Okay, then please proceed. Thank you.
All right, well, the proposed ordinance, which is in Exhibit 3 to your staff report, is a nuisance prevention ordinance. It adds a new article to the animal section in the public, animal chapter in the public health division of the Ventura County Ordinance Code. And so, the proposed ordinance, as I indicated, is not structured as a zoning ordinance, it doesn't directly amend any zoning ordinances. However, it, it is structured in such a manner that it will override and supersede any inconsistent provision of, of any provision of the Ventura County Ordinance Code, including the non-coastal zoning ordinance and the coastal's ordinance. So, here's how this ordinance proposal came about. Back in, back in July, Supervisor Foy placed an item on the Board of Supervisors' agenda asking the board members to consider an ordinance similar to Solano County's ordinance that they adopted in 2011 to prevent nuisance conditions associated with rooster keeping. Rather than bringing a, a ordinance ready to adopt to the board, he brought the concept of the Solano County ordinance to the board to see if they were, a majority of the board was interested in pursuing that. And so, the board, by a unanimous vote, indicated that they would like to have an opportunity to consider an ordinance like this in the near future, and the board's vote was unanimous. They directed county council and county staff to draft an ordinance limiting the number of roosters per parcel of land. They directed that this ordinance be similar to the Solano County nuisance prevention ordinance. The, at that hearing, the sheriff indicated support for a Solano-style ordinance, said that, that ordinance had appeared to be working in that county. And the last words from Supervisor Foy to, to all of us was, keep it simple and expedite it. So, here it is, December, so, we're expediting. Okay, well, there are a number of ways in which a county can enact ordinances, and the legally correct method must be used so that the ordinance will be enforceable. And so, when we were given this assignment by the supervisors, we looked into what the proper procedure for the adoption of this ordinance was, and we determined that because the proposed ordinance would supersede and override certain provisions of the zoning ordinance as to rooster keeping, that the proper procedure is, is to process this proposed ordinance through the planning commission, essentially in the same manner as zoning ordinance text amendment, which I think you see fairly regularly. So, that's the procedure. And so, this procedure includes a, a published notice, which we have done, I think it's published 11 days ago, display ad, eighth of a page in the Ventura County Star, and then the, and that's a notice of a hearing before your commission, and then at this hearing, your procedure is essentially the same as it would be for a zoning ordinance text amendment. You receive a staff report, you conduct a public hearing, you deliberate the merits of the proposal, and you make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on whether or not to adopt the proposed ordinance or some modified ordinance. So, that's why it's here, and that's the procedure for you to follow today. Okay, now, the proposed ordinance is Exhibit 3 in your staff report, and its features are that it's a nuisance prevention ordinance. It's directed at noise, odors, and the crime of cockfighting, and in that regard, Section 1 of the ordinance has findings about the purpose and, and need for that. The ordinance is modeled after the Solano County ordinance, which is, an earlier version of that ordinance is in Exhibit, is part of Exhibit 2, Supervisor Foy's board letter package. They actually adopted a slightly changed ordinance when they, when they adopted that. So, I modeled the county's ordinance, the Ventura County ordinance, after the ordinance, Solano County ordinance that was actually adopted. The ordinance applies in the unincorporate area of Ventura County. Yet, violation of the ordinance are deemed misdemeanor infractions, which is, many of the county's ordinances are designated that way. It allows the district attorney to have discretion in terms of how it's prosecuted based on the facts of the case. And the, an important feature is, is that the ordinance supersedes inconsistent existing provisions of the Ventura County Ordinance Code, including the non-coastal zoning ordinance and the coastal zoning ordinance. It does this by the language that's on page 15 of your staff report, says notwithstanding any other provision of the Ventura County Ordinance Code, here's what's prohibited. This is a, a, not a, not a commonly occurring, but a occasionally occurring method of enacting legislation and- legislation, and so it's not particularly out of the ordinary for a legislative body to just override all its existing provisions, say, now this is the law. Okay, continuing with the features of the ordinance, the primary operative provision is this, this proposed ordinance would limit the number of roosters per parcel of land. And it does so by means of, it's a regulatory ordinance. It does this by means of a prohibition. So it prohibits five or more roosters per parcel, thereby allowing there to be up to four roosters on any parcel. So prohibits five, allows zero to four. And then having stated that limitation of four roosters, it excludes then the four-rooster limit from commercial poultry ranches, schools, nonprofit animal rescue facilities, and county facilities. The four-rooster limit also doesn't apply to FAA projects and 4-H projects, or to legitimate poultry hobbyists, provided they receive written approval of the agricultural commissioner, who can distinguish between a legitimate operation in these matters and not a legitimate operation. So the ordinance also directs the ag commissioner to adopt regulations for providing these written approvals. If the ordinance is adopted, the four-rooster limit will not kick in for six months. And after the ordinance is adopted, this is on page 16 of your staff report, you'll notice the ordinance has a blank in it for the date. And this is, when we have a board date for this item, we would put a date six months after the board date. So that would give people who have too many roosters six months to come into compliance. And we've determined that that's a feature of the Solano ordinance. We've determined that's a reasonable period of time. Okay, and there are also additional standards for rooster keeping, no tethering, sanitary premises, sheltered water. So those are, again, part of a carryover from the Solano ordinance. Now, the ordinance finding in Section 1 of the ordinance demonstrate that the goal is to prevent odors, noise, and to eliminate the supply of roosters for the crime of cockfighting. So I wanted to, just for your information, show you that Penal Code 597B does make cockfighting a crime punishable by misdemeanor. There's other subsections of this section that make second and subsequent convictions more serious penalties up to a felony and more of a fine. Put this People versus Bannequid reference on here, and I think you'll have a copy of that case. Cockfighting is a ghastly activity by any standard, and I think when you read just the three pages of that case, you'll see what the board is, in part, attempting to address here. Okay, well, I believe that your commission's very well-versed in the zoning ordinance provisions for animals, based on your recent tiger hearings and pig hearings, and now you've got roosters.
Oh, we had snakes three years ago.
Oh, you had snakes. Yeah, I remember that. I forgot the snakes. I had snakes too, way back. But I did want to give you some examples of how the proposed ordinance would override some of the zoning ordinance provisions. So the zoning ordinance, you know, breaks out animal keeping into a number of categories, animal husbandry, animal keeping, non-husbandry, animal keeping, accessory to dwellings, and there's further subcategories. And as to the number of animals, the zoning ordinance establishes this animal units regulatory scheme. So each type of animal is given an animal unit factor, and then those factors, depending on which animals you have in your parcels, on your parcel, add up to whatever animal unit you're allowed for that parcel. So, and you can see that, I don't know how visible that is, but you can see a cow is one animal unit, a deer is a half an animal unit, and a rooster is a tenth of an animal unit. So 10 roosters per animal unit. Okay? So that's the basic setup in the zoning ordinance. Now, this 8107-2.5.2 sets up how many animal units are allowed on each parcel. And so it says the maximum number of animal units on a given lot is set forth in Table 3. And then when you go to Table 3, you have this, you have this grid. You have, oops, that didn't work. Okay. I'm going to use my own. Down on the side, you have the zoning designations. Across the top, you have the lot size, and inside, you have the allowed number of animal units for that size parcel in that zone. So here, in the open space zone, you have a 19,000-foot, square foot parcel, you get two animal units. That's two cows, 20 roosters. Okay? Or one cow, one deer, five roosters. Okay, if you have a parcel over 10 acres, there's unlimited animal units. Okay? And then down here in some of the smaller parcels, you see the same thing. In RE, if you have a smaller lot, you get fewer animal units than if you had a bigger lot. And then as you get to the big lots, there's a formula. So that's the basic setup in the zoning ordinance. And so what would happen with the adoption of the proposed rooster keeping ordinance is that whenever the zoning ordinance would allow five or more roosters, the proposed ordinance would override the zoning ordinance and limit it, would only allow up to four roosters per parcel. So that's one way in which it would supersede the zoning ordinance. Another example is in, this is in a section from your non-conformities chapter in the zoning ordinance. Non-conformities due to the number of animals as accessory, accessory uses to dwellings shall be brought into conformity not later than three years after it becomes non-conforming. So this would also be overridden. This provision wouldn't give you three years. It would be overridden, you'd get six, you'd get six months to come into compliance if you had too many roosters and became non-conforming. So that's a couple of examples of how this would override the zoning ordinance. Okay, now, we undertook a review of the proposed ordinance under the California Environmental Quality Act, and we determined that the proposed ordinance would reduce noise, reduce order, and reduce crime, and therefore have beneficial effects on the environment, and therefore qualified for both the general exemption for projects where it can be, where there is no potential for significant effects on the environment, and also eligible for, to categorical exemptions, actions by regulatory agencies to protect natural resources and to protect the environment. So those are further explained in the text of the staff report. Now, the board will consider this after it receives a recommendation from your commission. If the board doesn't adopt this ordinance, there doesn't need to be any future actions, of course. But if the board does adopt the ordinance, there's six months before the rooster limit kicks in. And during that six months, it's anticipated, and the ag commissioner is directed to adopt these regulations with respect to 4-H, FAA, and the hobbyists. So that's one series of events that'll happen if the board adopts the ordinance. The other follow-up matter is the, the planning department, division has indicated that they would like to conform the zoning ordinance to this limit if it, if the limit does pass, and that they'll, they'll go through and do that, and they'll try to do it as resources allow. We've already, I've already looked at it a little bit and talked to the planners about it, or try to get these in place about the same time the ordinance, or the same time the four-rooster limit kicks in. Another reason to wait on this, we didn't do it as part of this presentation, is it's just, we didn't want to invest the resources in all this additional drafting and effort until we know that the board's in favor of proceeding with this type of an ordinance. Okay, our recommended actions to your commission is that you make certain recommendations to the board. And we've listed those on, in full, on Page 5 and 6 of your staff report. The core recommendations are that you recommend to the board that this ordinance is exempt from CEQA, that you find that the adoption of the ordinance is in the public health, safety, and welfare, general welfare, inconsistent with the general plan and good zoning practice, and recommend that you adopt the proposed ordinance, that the board adopt the proposed ordinance. This recommendation for adoption, coming from our office, we usually don't get involved in policy matters, but this is based on the support of the sheriff, animal services, and RMA code enforcement, who supported this type of ordinance before the board in July. But as I previously indicated, your commission has a full range of options regarding our recommendation to the board. You can recommend the, you can recommend adoption as proposed, you can recommend adoptions as amended, you can recommend that it not be adopted. But I'm sure the board would value your expertise in animal matters and would value your input on this. So I would note that Santa Clara County, in 2007, adopted an ordinance similar to this, and that was the model for the 2011 adoption by Solano County of an ordinance like this. And then 2013, County of San Diego adopted a similar ordinance. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions about the ordinance, I'd be happy to answer them, and I believe there's staff people here who could answer your questions about roosters in the real world. So with that...
Thank you, Jim. Any questions? I have a couple, but give me a chance. Anybody have any questions? My first question is, since we published this, I see no comment in the staff report. Have any response to the publishing, phone calls, emails?
Well, I haven't received any, and we set the notice up so planning would get the emails and calls, and as far as I know, none were received. Now, you know, this, this matter was heard by the board in July, and there were newspaper articles about it.
Right.
And then we did the eighth-page ad, and Supervisor Foy's office, I should have mentioned, has given out the ordinance and information about it to interested parties. So, you know, I think we've done a fairly good job in that regard.
No, I just want to establish the record. The public was notified, and we got no responses, so that's now on the record. My second question is, this is going to be reviewed by the ag commissioner. My assumption is you've had dialogue with that body, and where I'm going is, is there any potential conflict with state law regarding roosters and poultry?
No, we've looked into that, and we don't think there is. This is something within the purview of the board. The state law deals with crimes and with commercial agricultural operations. This limit doesn't apply to commercial agricultural operations. So, you know, we think the ordinance is clear of all those things.
Okay. All right. Any other questions in the staff presentation? Everybody clear about roosters? So when we do the pot-bellied pigs again, we know what to do?
I'll be here.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. I'm not going to ask for a disclosure, since this is a legislative for the entire county. I have to make sure that statute of limitations run in some matters anyway. So I just find it interesting, 20 years ago, we ran into this situation back in some of the canyon, so we didn't have a device like this to use, so it became an issue. All right. With that, then, I'll open the public hearing. I have no speaker cards. I have one comment card, which I will pass around to the commission for review. So anybody would like to speak on this matter? If you'd like to speak, please come forward, your name, and then see the clerk afterwards to fill out a card. Please give us your name.
Hi, my name, excuse me, my name is Jill Luhan, and I am the poultry project leader of the Santa Rosa 4-H, and also on the 4-H board for the leader of the Small Animal Project Development Committee. We were notified of this about, as he says, when they were, put it in the paper. We have some comments and some questions on the proposed rule. The current rule of cockfighting is illegal, and it seems to not have deterred this illegal activity. There are still cockfighting rings. The making of something illegal to these people have not changed their behavior. They know it is illegal, and they still hide it. One of the reasons that you propose is prevention of odor. The prevention of odor is still the same between a hen and a rooster. So limiting the amount of roosters is not, doesn't have any meaning to me. It's limiting the kind of breeds we can have. Also, giving us six months to get our roosters into compliance is basically allowing us to kill our roosters that are pets, because no one is going to take these roosters with this new compliance in rule. It is not uncommon for a 4-H member to have four roosters for breeding purposes, and this requirement for a permit for additional roosters puts a lot of paperwork requirement on a kid, thus the parents. Thus, the parents will say, "We're not going to do this anymore, because it's too much work, and this is a huge learning experience for kids to raise and breed animals. We moved to the rural area so that we can do this, and this is taking away our ability to do that." One of our concerns is that if we follow all these rules and we have one disgruntled neighbor, and we all have that kind of neighbor that doesn't like a rooster crow, and they can use this against us, this rule, and say, "I don't, there's too much noise," or whatever, and we would be subject to this rooster, to this person's complaint if we had to get a permit. And I don't know if you've covered that, but you have to get a permit now to have more than five roosters. If we have a complaint against this, we are in fear that we would not be allowed to continue our projects, and it would be because of somebody's complaint. He didn't cover over some of the things that we have questions about, which I'll get to a little later. So I guess we'll do it now. The following questions I have. What does it take to get a written approval from the agriculture commission to have more than four roosters? Is there a change, and after, is there a charge, and after that, we get this approved, do we have to insate it yearly? Why would we not be approved to have more than five, four roosters? What would be the reasons? Do they have to come on your property to inspect? And the proposed 40-foot setback, is that from a living residence or any building on the property, such as a barn? If this ordinance is adopted in some way, it should read "per parcel of land," not per, I mean, per acre of land, not per parcel of land. But if this, but our final recommendation is not to adopt this ordinance at all. It limits... It limits our ability and a lot of undue stress.
Any questions, Jill? Looks like not. Thank you very much for speaking. I appreciate that. Make sure you fill out a speaker card with the clerk before you leave.
Where is the clerk at?
Right here. Young lady down here. She's over 21, so she can handle it. Okay. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Again, your name.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Donna Gillespie. I'm the Deputy Director for Ventura County Animal Services. I want to say good morning and thank you for your time on this matter, and thank Supervisor Foy's office and everybody else who has brought this forward. I just want to share that cockfighting is a barbaric sport, and it is very prevalent in our county. I've worked for the county for over 20 years, and I've been involved in many cockfighting busts and going in and taking of the roosters and keeping them at our shelter in Camarillo. This ordinance will give us a tool. When we go out and we know where they're keeping the roosters, they keep them well, they feed them well, they take care of them, they're beautiful birds. We know what they're being kept for, but they don't have any of the felonious instruments that they strap to their, to their, yeah, to their legs so that they fight each other to the death. They don't keep them there with them in the housing. What they keep is ribbons, and they call them showbirds. There's nothing we can do about their housing. We have to wait and be reactive when they go and fight them. So, this would be a great tool for Animal Services when we encounter these roosters being held. And that's basically it. Cockfighters are very, very cunning, and it's a horrible thing to do to these animals. And it also puts on the citizens of Ventura County, because we have to hold them at the shelter while they go through trial. So, I just wanted to introduce myself and give the support of Ventura County Animal Services for this ordinance and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gillespie. Any questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down. Any other public comments on this matter? Yes? Well, we got two? No? Come on down. You can speak after her. No, no. Ladies first.
Yes.
Name, please.
My name is Kitty Beckman. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Small Animal at the Ventura County Fair. I'm also a 4H poultry consultant. Been doing poultry myself for a long time, breeder, working with the kids. I can, you know, am still doing all of that. I loathe the fact that people use the birds for fighting. Right off the bat, I'll let you know that. But this proposal has such an impact on 4Hers, FFA, kids, the schools. Every year, we have more kids hatching eggs in the classroom. Well, where do you think those chickens go? They can't have them in the city. Camarillos, five hens, and that's it. They come back to the breeders. So, we have, I have lots of roosters, you know? They're my pets. And we've seen this decrease of kids' ability to raise chickens in the cities, and now ones that are out of the cities are going to be restricted, and we're seeing less and less kids participating at fair. We used to have, if you've been to the fair, we used to have barns 1, 2, and 300 full of chickens. We can barely fill one barn now, because of all the restrictions being put on to these kids, and adults, too. You know, the people who do showbirds, and we're seeing even the show, this Seaside Feather Fancy shows, going down, because people can't raise the number of chickens anymore. So, I'm for anything that stops cockfighting, but I don't think this is going to do it. I know Solano may have a great program, but I can go down through our county, and I can see where the barns are going up and where they're raising birds. I'd rather see the energy put, maybe patrolling, or having a wet tip for when we suspect stuff's going on, and understand they have to be found with the bracelets and stuff they put on them. But going after the kids and the school programs we do, I don't think is the way to go. So, I would say I'm totally against this.
Thank you. Any questions, Kitty? Thank you again. Sir?
Good morning, everyone.
Your name, sir?
My name is Mauricio Ramirez, and I'm here today for both sides, with restrictions, of course, that you guys have put on us. I grew up in Camarillo. I was 12-years-old, and it was the best place in the world. It's still the best place in the world, the whole county is. The only program that's still available for high schools, which is the Ag program, and I believe it's Camarillo. Every school around Ventura County High School has done without their Ag programs now, especially after the Oxnard or the Channel Islands High School massacre that they had there one year, and they closed down the entire thing to their students. But all these activities for the kids are going away. Now, I keep, I am a hobbyist for roosters. And it's, of course, it's the rooster that everybody is talking about here today, the fighting rooster. And it's not the fighting rooster. It's called American game, fowl. I belong to, I was hoping that they did send, I heard that you guys did not receive a letter from our president, from the California Prevention Fowl Association. And so, they had told me that they sent one out to all the Supervisors of Ventura County. I received one. I apologize, I did not bring it today to show you. If there is another meeting coming up, I will provide that with, for you, that was sent to me. I do keep, I am on a 20-acre property, and I rent, and the whole reason why I left the other areas, because there was an activity, huge activity of cockfighting. Okay? And I did not want anything to do with it. So, my friend's father-in-law lent me or rents me the property so that I could be down there. But, you know, this is my hobby. I consume them, I breed them, I raise them from eggs, as probably the ladies do. You know, I am the only one here today, and I'm only here for myself, because nobody else showed up that are in the same hobby as me. And I just found out last night through an older gentleman, he's probably about 77-year now, 77-years-old. So, he couldn't come this morning. So, or he would have been here today, too. But I'm the only one here. So, I'm speaking just for myself. The ladies, I'm with you. So, you know, the issue about that there's a nuisance, yes, and that's where, of course, the community is closer and the houses are, everybody is closer, yes. And there is people that just don't, you know, want the roosters anymore. But they come from the big city, but they want to live in the country, because every time I go to LA, they tell me, "Hey, you're from that farming community, you're from the country." I said, "Yes, I am. Best place in the world." You know? So, you know, then they want to come over here, but they want to live like they live in the city and come and change codes and ordinance and all that. So, they want to live to that. I just got, I'm not the owner of the property, but as I was driving out, this gentleman wanted me to sign a petition so that he could ride the horses across the ranch there where I'm at, you know, and they didn't give it to him. So, he was, he wants, he came out of Beverly Hills or LA, but he wants to live like in LA, but he wants certain things, and he's been going up and down the neighborhood. And this was probably about six months ago. And people there just don't want that. They want to live like we do. You know, we want the country style. They have places to ride horses. So, the nuisance of the noise and everything, I'm on, again, I'm on a 20-acre lot, and around me, it's about 10 acres in each direction. The location across from me has 260 acres across, but across, I mean, long, and across from me is about almost 15 acres, to the outside, seven and maybe 10. And that's the closest houses are 10 acres away. So, the city quiets down after 5:00, 6:00 in the evening. Here, still in Ventura County, the noise begins at 5:00, 6:00 in the morning, and that is when roosters, chickens, mostly roosters, because they sing to the day. They wake up to the day. They're always happy to see the day. So, that's when they start making noise. But there's noise everywhere in the entire city or in the world. It's daytime. Dogs make noise at night, more than a rooster does. A rooster will not wake up to a dog. It'll wake up to a huge siren and lights coming on, but it will not, you know, it will not wake up at night. So, the nuisance supposedly is during the day, but the entire world is noisy throughout the day. The smell, like the lady said, we keep up, as me, as a hobbyist, I have to keep up my cages clean. Of course, if they come in, they're going to see something that's not good. They're going to write me up, and I'll get to that in a moment. So, I have to keep them up clean. If I have visitors, and I do provide people, but not cockfighters, because I will guarantee it that there's not one bird that I give away, that I trade, or that I sell, that is in Ventura County. And if they pick up the birds that, "These guys are fighting," and I'll get to that one, too, "These guys are fighting," you will not find one bird, because I will go to the bird and I will find my marking. I'll find it for you. I cannot tell you right now where it's at, because you don't have any of mine, and I guarantee it. I will give you, I will give you states, I will give you people that I send out to, not names, I'll just say Mrs. San Antonio, Texas, Mr. and Mrs. Florida, Tampa, Florida, okay? Mr. South Carolina, Mr. Tennessee, Mr. and Mrs. Colorado, Mr. Arkansas, and Mr. Arizona, Phoenix, Arizona, okay? In California, I do not, I do not do much trading, because I do not want anything to come back to me. I am, I am the only one probably that's registered here and besides the ladies with their program. In Ventura County, I was asked to make sure that that place, or where I'm at, the ranch, did not have a permit for game fowl or fowl. So, I came in, and I paid for one, $265 for my permit. Okay? So, I'm willing, because I'm a hobbyist, I'm willing to go the distance and provide or make sure that I'm following the ordinance in Ventura County. Let me see. On the cockfighting, I'm going to get to this so that you guys understand, and everybody knows here, if you're not informed. Many guys have been already caught with this cockfighting, but nobody's done anything about it. The county has not prosecuted anybody, and that's what makes me upset. You're going to take our rights away, because the county has not done anything about it. These guys, somehow, guys gave them my phone numbers, and they say, "Hey, what's going on? Don't talk to me. I've already told you guys. You don't do this. Go find somebody that's going to help you." Well, what do you think they'll do to me? I don't care what they do to you. Then I get a phone call that they didn't do anything. I went to my hearing, nothing was done. I want, I want, I want you guys to do something about it. Prosecute these guys, because they're taking my hobby away. Prosecute them. There's a guy, the only, the one that, the closest derby that was set, close to my property, where I have my fowl. One guy came to Ventura County and was told, "Sir, stay out of Ventura County. You don't want to mess with Ventura County. You're free to go." He paid his attorney to do all the talking, nothing was done, and he's not going to come back again. Also, that derby that was set there, the guy was, because I found out, I wanted to find out, the guy's not even from Ventura County. He's from LA. So, these guys come in, and they know people from the farms that they're watering, or they work for the farms, and they lend them the places, or they rent them. They're not, that guy was not even from there, or from Ventura County that set that derby. So, please, I ask you, as a hobbyist, to prosecute these guys, but nothing has been done, because they're all walking around. And yes, there is, there is a crime there being done, but you know what? There's also, and I understand, it wasn't brought up. I don't know if I should bring it up, but there is, I know that there is, there is people that go to these derbies that are in-law, their lawyers, their judges, their police officers, their chiefs, their everyday people, but those are hobbyists of what they say, you know? But we need to prosecute all these guys that are doing this, because we haven't done that yet. So, that's what's giving them and continuing, the continuing of the cockfighting pits, because we haven't done anything about it. I think the last one was like 10 years ago, I think. The Santa Paula Ranch, where they had all the roosters there. Okay? You know what I'm talking about now. So, you know, I believe somebody was prosecuted there, and that was it. Now that there's been either 14 or 17 guys that have been caught, none of them have been prosecuted. So, again, I don't want, I don't want my hobby to be taken away because of somebody else, and I ask you to just, you know, please, please do that. That's going to cut down a huge, a huge amount of these guys doing that. A whole bunch of them, I know it is. Okay? Again, my name is Mauricio Ramirez, and I care about my hobby. I've been doing it since I was 10-years-old. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Ramirez? Again, those who've talked, when we finish, just see the clerk to get a card, so we can keep it for the record. But thank you for your information, sir. We appreciate it. Yes, ma'am? Name, please.
Hi. My name is Kim Ramsier. I'd like to address what exactly the cockfighting does for the county, because maybe you guys don't. I know the Board of Supervisors has to deal with this, but maybe not you folks so much. But it's a multifaceted problem. You've got the sheriffs, who have to keep surveillance on possible activities. When they hear about cockfightings going on, they send out people, and like someone said, these are very sophisticated operations. Outlooks are posted around, and the sheriffs really don't get very far, and boom, everybody's gone. What they find there is that there's illegal sale of alcohol, there's illegal gambling, there's illegal drugs, all kinds of steroids and things are pumped into these birds. And of course, there's all kinds of sharp objects and all that they attach to the birds so that they can make a bloody mess, and everybody has a lot more fun. There's also children. I'm not sure how many of you saw the article that they put in The Time, not The Times is a Star, but children are allowed to actually go to these affairs, and, no, not a lot, actually, I think it's illegal for them to be there, but they do it anyway, to watch these birds fight to the death. This is how these kids are brought up, and it's a cultural thing. There are a couple of particular cultures where, outside the United States, where this is done, and it's normal, and these people just want to have their fun here. But what that does is puts a huge burden on the county for expenses. If you can imagine the hours and hours of labor to surveil the stuff and go in and clean it up, the burdens on the animal control people who have to deal with the aftermath, what do you do when you get 400 chickens, or roosters, and you have to put them to sleep or whatever? It really makes a huge burden on the county itself. Plus, it brings in crime. You've got these people that bring in all this activity, and so, because it's allowed in Ventura County, or they can get away with it... or they can get away with it in Ventura County, they come here from LA, so they can have their fun and make their money. Okay? It's basically all about money. Well, except blood and guts, too, I guess. One of the things he brought up is this man with the rooster hobby, that made me think, the ordinance would help make the landowners responsible. Because right now, they can't say, you know, "Oh, I'm just renting the land out to them. I don't know what they're doing." But if it's the landowner that is made responsible for what happens on his land, duh, then I think you might see this all help going through a lot more clearly and simply. There is a history of the county not prosecuting these types of things. And the reason I read about that from a 1980's article in the LA Star, Ventura County Star, was that the DA here was never around long enough to really make it a priority, and that that's a problem here in the county. So, that is correct. So, and also, I'm not sure how many roosters someone feels they have to have. Four seems like a nice number. If you've got more than that, you know. They don't all have to be viable. You can still have a pretty rooster. If you neuter them, then they don't make so much noise. And they're not the bird that you think they are anymore. They're no longer roosters. People do grow roosters for food. They're called capons. But they're neutered at two weeks. Okay? If people want to have beautiful roosters, they can neuter them. They will no longer make as much noise, and nobody can take them and fight them, even though they're telling you that it's a hobby bird. They will no longer tether them. If they don't have a hundred of them, then there's no need for them. They can have nice enclosures. But the rooster operations that are growing for the birds to fight actually have open areas where they have these birds staked out on, I'm guessing, four or five-foot leashes. They have a little, usually an A-frame shelter, so they can get out of the sun. They have water. And you know what's six feet away from them, on all sides, is more male roosters. Now, you know what male roosters do? It's like a stallion. What do they do? They fight. That's what they're bred to do. So, to have these roosters, many of them in plain sight on tethers, is actually abuse. Animal abuse. Okay? Not to mention putting them in a ring with razor blades attached to them. I mean, that's another thing. I also like to note that roosters on rooster farms do crow all day. They start just before dawn. Well, it starts around three o'clock in the morning, actually. And they crow all day. And then they crow more when people come to take care of them. They crow more when the coyotes are around them at nights. And a lot of the farms have large dogs that they keep in the enclosures to keep out coyotes. Well, those dogs get lonely, and they whine all day. So, the noise issue is much more than they're saying. And maybe it's ten acres, but we have wonderful trade winds here in Ventura County. And you get a sound like a rooster ten acres away, or let's say fifty roosters. That might make it more important to you. But fifty-eight roosters, ten acres away, makes a heck of a lot of noise. Okay? All day long. Hopefully, you're not trying to sit out on your veranda with a beer after working hard all day and like some peace and quiet, which is why people move to the country, usually. There are some options besides neutering. They do have Velcro straps now, that people can put around their roosters. Probably would keep them from biting other roosters. It also really keeps down on the noise. And then the neutering, again, is another way to keep them. So, I just wanted to make sure that you folks know more information about what's really going on out here, what it does to residents nearby, what it does to your own county services, and the burden placed on. And sure, you know, if there's like a canyon or something, and people want to raise, you know, fifty roosters for a hobby, because they're pretty, maybe there could be a concession made for that. And I think that's what the ag commissioner is going to come up with, his recommendations on. And San Diego went through this, because everybody tried, who was growing roosters, to fight with other roosters, were going to them and saying, "I'm a hobbyist." So, somebody, and here it would be the ag commissioner, will have to come up with things that are airtight, that allows people to have a certain amount of roosters for a particular purpose, and prove it. Thank you.
Any questions, Kim? Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak to this point? Yes, ma'am. Guess what? You need to tell me your name. Save it for the record, please.
My name is Monica James.
Thank you, Monica.
I am a co-leader of the Santa Rosa Valley 4-H Poultry Project, and active mom in 4-H. And I'm also on a county small animal project development committee. So, this proposed ordinance addresses three issues, which is the cockfighting, the nuisance, and the odor. I think it's established that, you know, cockfighting is a criminal activity, and it happens in, you know, the underground places that are not always on the radar, such as the, you know, river bottoms, the orchards, the fields. I live in a community of one-acre parcels and two-acre parcels, and my property is visible in all directions. So, for me to have any amount, I'm clearly not cockfighting. We do breed to teach my children about education in breeding animals. Also, sorry. They're not being prosecuted, like what has been mentioned. And I do believe that this ordinance is going after the subject of cockfighting, which is the rooster, rather than the organizers who are organizing these events and the venues. So, I don't believe that this ordinance would change anything. I think they would still all be doing it illegally, like they have been. And also, too, we live in a rural, unincorporated area, so we can enjoy our large animals, and our livestock, and our 4-H projects. You know, most of our neighbors have similar animals. There are times that people, you know, move to these areas expecting meadows, and sounds of, you know, butterflies. I don't know. But, you know, we, all these animal noises are part of our community. You know, roosters aren't any more of a nuisance than the barking dogs that are all around, that the coyotes that we hear, and the hawks in the sky, and the sounds of the cows down the streets, and sheep and goats. So, they're not a nuisance. I live an acre property, and all of the roosters, you hear them occasionally. But you hear the barking dogs much more. As for odors, ducks, turkeys, hens, which are female poultry, they all have odor if their housing isn't clean. So, that really doesn't apply, I don't believe. It's a matter of keeping your stalls clean for your horses or anything else. I guess my concern is that if we need to have written approval for 4-H projects by the Ventura County Ag Commissioner, are we going to be paying a fee? Do we have to renew this? Do we have people coming onto our properties where we're, you know, we have biosecurity in place? How is that going to be addressed? How are these ordinance, how is it going to be enforced? Are we going to have inspections? I think it's targeting truly the small hobbyists on small properties, rather than the big rings that are much bigger than the small, unincorporated communities. So, I don't agree with this. I agree in anything that can, you know, anything that we can do to keep cockfighting to where it's not a thriving business for people, especially prosecuting. But, you know, it's just going to restrict a small hobbyist and 4-H families. And I would really like to know how it would be enforced, and if there's a fee, and what's involved for the 4-H families to have this restriction. So, thank you.
Any questions of Monica? Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? Okay, not hearing any. Anything additional, Jim, you want to add? Because you will get questions about the process, the written approval and fees and all that.
Just in response to some of the issues that were raised, the issue of the activities are already illegal, but still do it. People still do this. Detective Cadman spoke before the board in July, and he is present. I thought he would be here today, and part of his presentation was how hard it is to enforce these cockfighting, the penal code, just factually, how difficult it is to catch the perpetrators during the act, and to have a case, and prove beyond a reasonable doubt. He indicated that this ordinance, by setting kind of a bright line test, would be a great enforcement tool, because either have four roosters, or you don't. And if you have more than four, and you have a written approval from the ag commissioner, you're good. So, he favored this ordinance, or he indicated to the board that this ordinance would be a useful tool. About the odors, I think it's the, the hens and the roosters may have the same odor, but it's the incentive to have additional birds, I think, that for people raising birds for cockfighting that cause additional odor, so it's an incremental odor issue. What does it take to get approval of the ag commissioner? The ag commissioner will develop these regs, and he's indicated to me he's going to base them on what Solano County did. And Solano County's regs I have here, and I can submit them to you. That's one, two, three, four, three and a half pages. It's a simple application, quick look, quick justification. It's intended to be a simple process, whether or not there's a fee, and some of the other issues are to be determined. This is part of the regulatory process that the board would delegate to the ag commissioner. But the ag commissioner's indicated to me that he would do something simple, like they did in Solano County. And in terms of taking away a hobby, your hobby's not taken away if you go to the ag commissioner and get the approval. It is an additional step. It is something you didn't have to do before. But this is a policy question for the board, and for you, is, you know, in order to eliminate roosters for cockfighting, is it good policy to have a little written approval for 4-H, FFA, and hobbyist use in order to address this larger problem of the harm coming with a large number of roosters and people supplying roosters for cockfighting? It's the intent of the ordinance and the expression of the board in July that this ordinance allow legitimate educational and hobbyist activities. And so, the fee and inspection issues will be addressed in the regulations. And any fee, of course, would have to be approved by the board, so. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Thonis?
Yes.
Commissioner Onstott.
Was there any evidence of increased prosecution in Solano County as a result of the adoption of the ordinance?
I don't have any information on that. I did watch their board items, and there was a lawsuit up there, which the county won. Their ordinance was sustained, so I believe the ordinance was upheld, and is... But I don't have any reports on whether it was beneficial or not.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jim? Okay. We're at that point. I think you've heard some testimony. We've heard some testimony. The details on how the exemptions for the hobbyists and the 4-H, and what does that look like? That's not in front of us right now. So, we get into deliberation. I'm going to talk about bringing as much information forward to the Board of Supervisors to answer those questions. So, you don't have that right now, I understand all that. Probably be wise to have the ag commissioner swing in at the Board of Supervisors.
I thought he would be here today, or represented, but...
Yeah, so, because we're sitting here going, at least I am, I can't represent the rest. Empathetic to what's being said, as far as that, but I can't answer any questions for him, so. Just moving forward. Appreciate it. All right. At this point, then, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, but it's the pleasure of the commission.
We're supposed to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that we don't have all the information we need, some of which will be supplemented, and a few before the board. The issue of cost and impact on 4-H, et cetera. So, that information will come later, and we can't satisfy the people that are opposed to the ordinance at this point in time, but that information will have to be developed before they adopt anything. And I would certainly like to know that some information regarding whether or not the adoption of such an ordinance led to increased prosecution. I'd like to know about the prosecution of cockfighting in Ventura County, period. How big a problem is it? Does it warrant, or does it justify this limitation on private property? I don't know the answer, and we don't have the information in front of us, but I would hope they would be in front of the Board of Supervisors when they have a finalized ordinance. So, I would request background and information be presented to the Board of Supervisors regarding the nature and extent of cockfighting, the impact, if any, on cockfighting as a result of adoption of an ordinance like this. That's all.
Any other deliberations? Commissioner Rodriguez?
As the board knows, I'm retired public safety, thirty-four years. And back in previous century antiquity, I guess, I've responded to these types of calls in a patrol car. And it's difficult. It's a difficult situation to resolve, because by merely responding, it solves the immediate problem. But I understand the need to have some tools to try to have an impact. And I don't know what the original motivation was. I assume it was complaints. And I've read the ordinance, and it seems like it addresses the issue. It talks about hobbyists. It talks about FAA. It incorporates the ag commissioner's office as part of the process for discrimination, or for exemption issues, and that type of thing. And I appreciate the comments from the public and the concerns about it, because it's an inconvenience to a process they currently move forward on without any sort of inhibiting regulations. But I also think we're trying to argue and get answers to protocols and procedure and process before the ordinance is even accepted or approved. I think if you're going to do this, you have to approve an ordinance and set your protocols behind that, in addressing a lot of these issues that are here. Solano County obviously was used as a template for this ordinance. The board has just had the opportunity to briefly review what appear to be protocols addressing the various issues in Solano County, and how they'll move forward. I didn't specifically see anything related to fee schedule. And, but that's something, part of the information, I think, that the board has to have in front of it if this commission approves the ordinance moving forward today. Before they can properly make a decision, I think Commissioner Onstott is right on with the need for additional supplementary information. Those are my comments.
Okay, any other thoughts? Commissioner Callen?
Which agency would be handling the recommendations regarding the ag commission protocols? Is that something Planning Commission, the ag commission? Is that anything that we stipulate at this point? Are concerns to be addressed?
I would address that county council, because...
The agricultural commissioner would be delegated authority under this proposed ordinance to develop the regulations and standards for approval of the... of the, uh, FFA, 4H and hobbyist activities, so, uh, uh, he'll go through a regula-, regulatory process for that, which includes, uh, a lot of public input.
Does that answer your question? I think there's the enforcement side that I, who'd handle the enforcement side, Jim, would that still mean the county animal services?
Well, it's, uh, right now it's been, um, the sheriff and code enforcement prosecutions filed by the district attorney, uh, I don't anticipate that that would change under this ordinance.
So then, as far as the permitting process, it would stay with the ag commissioner at this point?
Yes.
But enforcement would remain with the, the law enforcement?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, what concerns me a little bit is that we don't really have any information on how effective this has been in other counties or how effective it will be here, and we have, you know, we're creating a whole nother layer of, of, um, regulations and I would be more comfortable knowing that it was gonna be productive.
Okay, any other thoughts? Uh, then I'll weigh in, uh, I, I'm gonna resonate with both what my fellow commissioners have said and the public, um, there's, nobody's questioning the intent at all, um, we've had a couple situations in my tenure up here and we all know this is something we need to deal with, uh, and this is an attempt to deal with it because it's obviously the law enforcement is having a hard time doing anything, so, um, it's trying to get our arms around it, but I, I agree with my fellow commissioners, there's a little more detail needs to be brought forward, um, to coin a new phrase, let's pass it and figure it out later, uh, small joke out there, uh, but it, these are kinda questions to the legitimate individuals, how can I operate, um, I just literally just saw what, uh, Mr. Thonis had provided for us, um, gave me a little more comfort feeling of what the ag commissioner was gonna do, not do requirements, but what are the fees, you know, all those other details I think need to be brought forward to the board of supervisors, um, because we don't know if it's a $500 fee or a $25 fee, and how are the annual inspections gonna be performed, and also as far as our own animal services, how is that gonna fit into their bag of tools that they can use, so, it's more, um, I feel, we don't have enough details in these arena, particularly for the public's interest, uh, to, uh, to enable, uh, continued interest in ag, um, uh, what I found most, one of the most interesting is the fact that Camero is the only high school left with an ag program, um, and yet we're predominantly in agricultural county, so, um, I find that interesting, but, um, it is just the nature of the beast when we move people next to farms, um, so, I'm...
Well, what are we being asked to do today?
Recommend to the board of directors whether we like it, but we can make those recommendations include what we've discussed.
Right.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that? I mean, Commissioner Callie was absolutely, who's on first, I don't know third base as far as process and enforcement, and I can see multiple jurisdictional issues jumping up.
From, uh, from a point of, uh, not to amend the proposed ordinance, but as a point of reference, uh, to consider and possibly to amend, um, uh, or include in the protocols, these events tend to be word of mouth, uh, there's no posting on any, any webpage or the calendar section saying there's gonna be a cockfight in so-and-so's place, and the people that tend to, tend to get, get rounded up, uh, and I'll use the term loosely, the event planners, if you will, often don't have any vested interest in the location other than the fact they, they borrowed it or their tenants, um, I think, uh, if there's some, if there's some consideration of sanction for the property owner or the leaseholder, I think that will have as much effect on, on trying to curtail this as trying to round people up that, uh, that, uh, may or may not be from Ventura County, I heard, I heard the comment from the speaker before, um, and since it is so word of mouth, uh, and the, the information obviously gets out and where it's going on and who's doing it, um, if, if ag can, can make available some type of hotline, anonymous hotline, to allow people to say there's a cockfight going on so-and-so, who, and that in turn would generate a response directly to law enforcement or coordination between, between, uh, ag commissioner's office and public safety to respond to location, I think those things would be beneficial, but I think, uh, I think, uh, if there aren't any sanctions for the property owner to, that might allow this thing to happen in, in complete ignorance, um, that only goes so far and I think, I think something like that should be considered in recommending to the board, how to proceed with this ordinance and the protocols.
Does the ordinance have some sanction for landlord annoyingly allowing property to be used?
Uh, yes, it does.
Okay, and I apologize and I, I don't recall seeing that.
It's a very last section.
Okay, anyway, I would encourage that to, to be a major part of any ordinance.
Right, and, but we just saw on the Solano, the, um, the property owner has to sign off of somebody renting it, so if somebody rents it, they have knowledge and, again, the landlord has a responsibility to ensure the property's being used for the tenant purpose, so, uh, all right, anything else commissioners? Is staff clear on our discussion of what should be brought forward along with this recommendation to the board?
Uh, yes, and I'll, uh, watch the video of your deliberations and make sure I have it right.
You have an insomnia problem, is it? Okay, all right, all right, um, then the, the chair will entertain a, a motion for the recommendation with the amended, uh, provisos that have been given to staff going forward to the board supervisors, anybody wanna...
Is that clear on that?
Yeah, but I can't make the motion.
Oh, I understand.
Robert says I can't do it.
I'll make a motion that we, we move forward with the recommended, uh, staff recommendation to move this, uh, ordinance forward, uh, for a final approval by the board.
With the discussions that we've...
With, including discussions and comments and recommendations we've made to staff to include before it's presented to the board, uh, to give them a more inclusive understanding of the issues and the protocols that would be, uh, impacting, uh, those that are impacted by the ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion on the motion?
Well, I just wanna be sure that staff passes on that we would like to know what, what effect if any such ordinances have had.
Correct.
And what, if any prosecutions have taken place in the county of Ventura under the existing law, you know, maybe in addition to this, there should be some designation of someone to prosecute these things, I mean, the division of labor and the district attorney's office is such that they are tied to serious crimes, things like this are at the bottom of the ladder, unless some, unless some emphasis is put on it, they'll stay at the bottom.
Well, it's a sadly common in all of our functionalities of government process.
And statistically, you know, any prosecutions that may occur or have occurred are grouped with, you know, under, uh, another law, inclusive type of, of law as in, you know, animal cruelty, which could include a variety of things, so I don't know how we glean that out, I suppose, I suppose it's possible to, for the local sheriff to somehow pull that out of their statistics, but...
Well, again...
I can't speak to that with certainty.
Yeah, again, we're trying to take a, a first move at it, so, uh, let's move this forward since the board asked for it, so, if there's no further discussion, please vote. The motion passed 5-0, congratulations, see you in another five years, Jim? All right, all right, thank you ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate the public's participation if nothing else to keep us honest up here, and I'm, my apologies for the bad jokes, uh, right, all right, item eight, discussion by the planning director, on items, Madam Director.
Thank you, Chair Westner, um, I want to go over a little bit about what's upcoming on your, um, agenda, what's on the tentative agenda as well as what's on the board's agenda, and then update you a little bit about our general plan update and where we're going with that, so you have a copy of, uh, of your agenda, I see, uh, there's an item on here that's January twenty-eighth, and I know that that item has been moved to February fourth, so I asked the staff to update that, um, and what that is, is our local coastal plan updates, there's going to be several, um, items on there, there'll be six items that we'll be talking about on that date, it'll be arc and paleo, um, filming, parking, signs, tree, uh, protection and water efficient landscaping, we will not be discussing what I see on here is wireless telecommunications on that item, we're going to split the items up, we're going to be talking about another three later in the year, and those will be wireless telecommunications facilities, and this is only in coastal zone that we're talking about, um, as well as the coastal trail and environmentally sensitive habitat, so we're gonna hear the phase two of the local coastal plan update in two different sessions, so hopefully, um, we're waiting to, to get our final comments back from the coastal commission staff to bring these six items before you, um, unfortunately, um, they didn't have time to prepare the comments that we needed by the January twenty-eighth meeting, so we're shooting for February fourth, so I don't believe we have anything scheduled at this time for January twenty-eighth, but, um, I do have an item that we're going to schedule for the fourteenth, January fourteenth, and I do have all of your, um, confirm attendance on that day, um, it is going to be, uh, an item that we're going to be talking about on medical marijuana, so, the board is going to be hearing this item, we're preparing a, a board letter for the item on the fifteenth, um, to get the board's direction about what they're going to, wants us to do, and essentially this is the result of a suite of bills that the governor signed on October ninth, um, it's called the Medical Marijuana Regulatory and Safety Act, it's, um, it's several assembly bills and it effectively deals with the, it governs the cultivating, processing, transporting, testing and distributing of medical marijuana, um, so, there is some tight deadlines on this if the county wants to take any action, so at this point, twelve fifteen, we'll be going to the board to seek their direction on what they would like us to do, um, we plan to be back before you and turn that around on January fourteenth, and then we'll be back to the board on January twenty-sixth, because, uh, the, 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 the governing legislation takes effect March first, and so that's a very tight timeline for us, so, we'll be back, I see all five of you are going to be here to, um, enjoy that hearing, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of a, of a heads up on that and I'll get that item on the tentative agenda. Let's see, as far as what's going on at the, at the board, there's a study session that, uh, that it would probably be, um, serve you well to either attend or watch, and it's going to be on December fifteenth, and that study session is, it came out of the board of supervisors' request, and it came out of a, um, oil and gas project that was heard by your planning commission, it was, uh, appealed to the board, and that was the decor appeal, if you recall, where they, uh, there was an appeal for ministerially issued zoning clearances, and I believe that was a 5-0 decision from your planning commission to uphold that decision, it was appealed to the board, I believe it was a 5-0 decision at the board as well, but out of that came the issue of, are, are we doing all that's necessary to protect the condor and is the oil industry doing all that's necessary? So I know that your planning commission hears that issue a lot on appeals, maybe twelve or thirteen times in the last maybe eighteen months, and so, um, the board directed a study session to happen on that as a result of that case, and, and back in October, we held an, an initial meeting and we had thirty-five people attend that meeting from eighteen different agencies, it was the, um, ranging from the regulatory agency that's responsible for protecting the, in, uh, California condor, the endangered species, and that is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, so they came and gave a, a quite lengthy presentation on, on everything condor, what we know about them, the, the release, the reintroduction, um, microtrash and, and, and how that works, the mortality of the birds, the range of the flock, and it was a very, very interesting and in-depth, um, presentation, we also had folks there from, ranging from, you know, the Sierra Club to, uh, members of the oil agency, um, oil industry and, and WISPA, the Western States Petroleum, so it was a very great, well-rounded discussion on the issue, and so we're going to take that, um, to the board and have conversations with them on the fifteenth to see and, and, and to do a, a receiving and filing of this study session that we're going to do, so, I think since you hear the issue a lot as a planning commission, it would, it would be, uh, you would probably be well-served to, to attend that or watch it, it's at one-thirty on the fifteenth. Let's see, let's talk a little bit about February, let, let me go really quickly back to February fourth is when I think we're gonna be doing the LCP updates that I just talked about, um, I don't believe Commissioner Callie is going to be here for that.
Actually, if there is no meeting on the twenty-eighth, then I can be here on the fourth, I'm just kind of looking in either direction, so if there's not gonna be a meeting on the twenty-eighth, I, I need to be on the fourth.
Okay, I think the fourth will be an interesting discussion and then I think we were still waiting for Commissioner Rodriguez to, to see.
Um, as far as I know, I'm good.
Okay.
On that date.
Great.
I just filled out the, uh, the calendar for, for Anna.
Okay, and then I wanted to talk to you, um, uh, quickly about the general plan update to let you know where we were going with that, um, on December fifteenth, we'll also be going to the board for the contract approval, so, um, we did, we sent out an RFP for the board's direction and we had interviewed, um, three different, uh, consulting firms and we're going to the board on the fifteenth to, to see if they're wanting to select the firm and enter into the contract that, that we're recommending, so, once that's done, we're also doing, um, interviews, um, today and, and through this next week for the manager that we're, we're hoping to hire for the general plan update position, so with those two things in place, we'll probably be back before your commission sometime in late January, early February to kind of go through what we see the next three and a half, four-year process as being, and we're really going to try early on to, um, to let you know how often we're going to be in front of you, which will, which will be very often, I mean, the board is, has said that you're going to be the agency that we really work through for this, we're not going to create a separate committee that it is, resides with the planning commission, so we will be here frequently over the next four years to talk to you about where we're at in the general plan and, and seek your direction in, in many different instances, so, lots of moving pieces to that, but hopefully they're going to start settling down in January, so I, that's all I had, if you have something for me.
What was the basis of the litigation that was filed, you know, the Ferndale, uh, CUP?
Perhaps county council should answer that.
I'll, I'll leave that to Jeff.
I was just curious.
That's a, a sequel case alleging that, um, basically alleging there were significant impacts that, um, will result from the project and that the county needs to do more environmental analysis, that's the gist of it.
Okay, all right, anything else, Madam Director?
Yeah, I have, um, um, Kim, I'm good for the fourth of February on the calendar, on the other item, uh, scheduled for the fourteenth of, uh, of January, on that, uh, addressing the medical marijuana issue.
No free samples.
Hmm? Nope, right, no. Uh, I'm assuming that, uh, there'd be somebody from sheriff's department, qualified person that could speak to the, the impact of the, of the legislation and how it, uh, and make recommendations in the staff report, um, on, uh, whatever ordinance or, or protocol we're gonna put together as a county, um, and I'm assuming, and I would hope that, uh, a representative for that agency would be present to address, if not make a presentation, to at least address questions the board might have at that time, uh, to, in support of staff's work product that day.
Yes, not, not only representatives from the sheriff's department, but we've asked, it, it affects many different agencies, the agricultural, um, commissioner's office, behavioral health, public health, the resource management agency, code compliance, so, and as well as the sheriff's department, so they have all been involved in these preliminary meetings and they've all been asked to attend both the planning commission and the board hearing on that topic.
Okay.
Kim, what is pending, what, I mean, I don't understand, the state preempts that, what, what are, what are we faced, what, what do we have to do, what kind of ordinance are we requiring, how many shops on the street?
Commissioner, yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good question, so this, the, the new state law, a big component of it was the state setting up a permitting system for the cultivation of medical marijuana, and so, um, one aspect of the... And so one aspect of the state law says that unless local jurisdictions have land use rules that ban the cultivation of medical marijuana, then people wanting to cultivate medical marijuana, and this is, the language is a bit fuzzy, but this is the most prevalent interpretation, is that people wanting to cultivate can request a permit to grow, cultivate medical marijuana, and if the local agency doesn't want to permit it, then the state will. And so the law also says that by March 1st, if local agencies do not want to allow, I'll say, large-scale cultivation of medical marijuana, or any cultivation, then they need to have land use rules that specifically ban it or ban it through permissive zoning. And so March 1st, that's why there's this rush that all local jurisdictions are dealing with. And so the idea in our county is whether your planning commission and the board want to implement a ban, at least for now, so people don't go over our heads and start getting cultivation permits from the state. And so that's what this big rush is about. And so it's basically being, the state is shoving this deadline on us and saying, "If you don't act now, then people are going to start cultivating medical marijuana, whether you like it or not."
What's the feeling of the board? That's what we're going to the board for on the 15th, right? We're going to see what the board would like us to do.
Excuse me. Doesn't it also include the location of dispensaries and method of dispensing those that are qualified to purchase and acquire medical marijuana?
It does, and I'm sorry, that's another component of the law, that there's not a hard and fast deadline. If our county, so our county's, I should back up. Our county's position now is that dispensaries are not an allowed land use. And so I believe our proposed ordinance will clarify that and reiterate that, but that's another component of the state law, that the state is setting up a lot of rules. If a local jurisdiction allows dispensaries, then they have to follow these rules, but local agencies still have the right and ability to completely ban dispensaries. And so I believe a complete ban will be one aspect of this proposed county ordinance that's going to be before you.
Did the city of Moore Park just pass a similar ordinance? I read somewhere.
They did, yeah. It's, and if you'll see in the paper, and you will see going forward, cities and counties passing, and for now, I'm assuming most of them will be banned because of this deadline in the short term.
Is that clear as mud to everybody?
We have distributed a cockfight.
Having anything else, Madam Director? Or is that enough?
Yep. Commissioner Rodriguez, did you have something?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. One is, just curiosity, are we finished with pigs at La Conchita now? Or has there been appeal, an appeal by the board's decision supporting our decision, supporting the director's decision on that issue?
No, there isn't any. There was an appeal to the board.
Right.
And I'm sorry, I should have included that in my comment. So the board also made the same decision, upheld your planning commission's decision that they could have one pig, but they did extend the time that they could have to either relocate or find homes for their pigs or move into a zone that they could keep, I believe, the four remaining pigs that they have now. So I think that they were planning on doing that when I spoke to them last.
Thank you. One other, a couple of issues. Just reading the local paper editorial, where the city of Moore Park has basically cut a deal with Malibu, if you will, to transport sand to replenish or counter any erosion issues, I assume due to the El Nino situation pending. And in the process, basically, the city of Fillmore has gone unnoticed. And so as I read the paper, it appears that the truck trips that will generate from that agreement will circumvent the city of Moore Park, impacting other county roads and/or the city of Fillmore. It mentions a local gravel operation, but doesn't mention the operator. I'm assuming that the truck trips that would generate from such an agreement are within the, would be within the confines of any existing limitations or restrictions that mine or mines have on their activities in and out of their facilities?
That's correct.
Or are you, yeah?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So we all read about that in the paper at the same time?
Yeah, it doesn't sound like the county was involved in any of this. It's just...
No, the county wasn't involved, but we read about it in the paper. We called the mining operators and contacted the city of Fillmore and the coastal commission. And so the county has a lot of interest, clearly, in what goes on with the mines and, you know, what may impact one city or another. So I would say that that is very much in a state of our reviewing it in great detail right now, the actions that were taken.
The barricades are going up.
I wouldn't go that far, but I think both of the mining operators, frankly, in my conversations with both mining operators, and that would be Semex and Rusty Cochran, that neither one of those operators were willing to, weren't involved in those immediate negotiations and weren't willing to put that impact on the city of Fillmore.
Okay. Having tenured in the city of Fillmore for three years, I'm well aware of the issues with trucks and the administration and the city over there. So it kind of piqued my interest. Lastly, and not to belabor this issue, the issue of encroachments came up in this PL The county has, in the last two years, had to go through the Silver Strand residence neighborhood to address the issue of encroachments, unpermitted encroachments, primarily frontage to residences as a result of complaints. Subsequently, there were, the supervisor's office was involved. There were meetings held, Winston, I think, participated in most, if not all, those meetings to get input from the community. And ultimately, approximately a year ago, recommendations were put forward by county transportation for the board's consideration to address these unpermitted encroachments and get some resolution to them on behalf of the property owners, myself included, because of lack of knowledge or ignorance or disregard, if you will, of the issue of public easement right away. That issue's come up again now in this particular item we heard this morning. And as I said previously, as I looked at the pictures and took the time to look at Google Earth to see the property, and I'll leave a copy of what I have with the clerk. It appears that defined alleyway, public easement between, I think it's Santa Rosa and Highland, has been blocked with fencing and/or significant landscaping on both sides to the point where you can't get through there. And I understand how it happened and why it happened. I'm a resident of Silver Strand, and lots generally are 35 by 55, 35 by 75, and every effort's made to maximize your available usable space. And so I am assuming that residents push backwards beyond the six-foot setbacks to whatever they are now, butting up against the adjacent property lines behind them. Anyway, it was an issue here today, and potentially it could be an issue in other things coming forward. And I would ask that you forward the information and request to transportation and have them look at the issue and see how it can be resolved, through the appropriate protocols that are in place to do that, if you would.
Yes, no, I've already asked Becky to make sure that she alerts the transportation director for those parcels back there and work with the fire department to, you know, just see what the issue is. That encroachment issues are tricky, and they take a lot of research to really figure out who has the rights and how they became to be what they are. But we will look at those several parcels to see if that alleyway should be open.
I mean, there may be encroachment permits already in place.
Right, it's possible.
But we don't know that.
Right.
And so I think it's prudent to look at it. Fire is a major issue of concern in that tightly knit community with three-foot clearance on sides and six foot in the back. And so when something happens, something like this, access is blocked. It impacts not only the business we saw today, but surrounding property owners as well. So I will leave my, the documents I reviewed with the clerk, and she can forward them to you.
Any other commissioner comments? I just have one, since we got a floating timeframe out there. The election of chair and vice chair and regular meeting dates needs to be put on one of those two agendas, okay, for the 14th or the 4th, per our bylaws.
Or you can just keep calling.
If you miss the meeting, there's an incentive. Okay, I just wanted to put that. They did that to me in Moore Park. I had to quit to get out of there. All right. Anything else? We go to the order, not hearing any, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you particularly, Counselor, for visiting with us again.